Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. This is the Highland Park Planning Board meeting for October 10th, 2024. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice that this meeting was provided to the Home News Review and the Star Ledger of the Highland Park Planet on January 23rd, 2024, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are located to the left and right of council chambers, and please remember to speak into the microphones. So take roll call, please.
Ms. Hamm.
Here.
Mr. Brusher. Mr. Chin.
Here.
Mr. Eisdorfer.
Here.
Ms. Hadhazy.
Here.
Ms. Toham.
Here.
Mr. Laneras. Mr. Malley.
Here.
Mr. Perlman.
Here.
Mr. Stern Cardenoff. Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Lynch.
Here.
Mr. Cosenza.
Here.
Mr. Koch.
Here.
All right, very good. First up on our agenda is review of our July 11th, 2024 minutes revised from our last meeting. Anyone on the board have any comments about the July 11th, 2024 minutes? Nobody? Excellent revisions. Look at that. All right. Can we bundle this in with the next set of minutes as well, or do we have to do them individually? Okay. All right. Do we need roll call? We don't need roll call. The minutes we can do all in favor. All right, so I'll solicit a motion to approve the July 11th.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Mr. Williams abstains.
I'll also abstain because it wasn't there.
And Mr. Chin abstains. But even still, that was enough eyes to make it pass. So motion passes. Moving on to the August 8th, 2024 minutes, does anyone have any comments about the August 8th, 2024 minutes? One? One, twice? All right, I'll solicit a motion to approve our August 8th, 2024 minutes.
Motion to approve.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions?
Abstain.
I'm sorry, that was Alvin, Mr. Chin, and Matt. All right, and with that, the motion carries. Very good. Moving on from our minutes, we have resolution on the consistency review for ordinance 24-2092 and the recommendation of the 810 North Second Avenue redevelopment plan for lot 24 Block 503. We already had a motion on this last week. This is just approval of the actual written resolution, right? We all approved the, or at least the board said that the redevelopment plan was not inconsistent with the master plan, and I think this resolution is just memorializing that. So does anyone on the board have any comments on the language for the resolution of memorialization for the consistency review of the 810 North Second redevelopment plan?
Yes. Just a word after the speed, on page two, after the line that begins the city of Brunswick, I think that should be Edison Township.
Ah, yes, it's not East Edison Township, it's just Edison Township.
Do you have a point, Tom?
Sure.
Spelled my name correctly.
Oh, no!
A-L-L-A-N.
All right, and we absolutely need to correct the spelling of Alan Williams's first name. Ah, yes, gonna make it hard to sign that when it's spelled.
Say with a French accent. I love it.
Yeah. All right, any other comments on the resolution? No? All right, then, I don't even think that needs a motion, right? It's a sign, it's for the resolution. All right, then. Once it's...
No idea.
Oh, all right, then, I will, I will trust Rogers' directive that apparently we do need a motion. Do you think we need a roll call, a motion to approve the...
You do a roll call, yes.
All right, so, so, wait, wait, we didn't have a motion yet. I'll solicit a motion to approve the resolution of memorialization.
So, as a man.
All right, and second? And multiple seconds? Well, Patrick Malley will start. All right, and then we'll take a roll call, please.
Mr. Chin?
Yes.
Mr. Eisdorfer?
Yes.
Ms. Hadhazy? Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Perlman?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Hale? Yes. I'll stand by once that gets corrected.
Okay. Last but not least, we have a consistency review of ordinance number 24-2096 and ordinance amending and supplementing chapter 230-124, the zoning map, and 230-4, attachment four in order to update the zoning map within the borough of Highland Park. As a reminder, our role as a board is to ensure that the ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan. The master plan can, of course, be found on the Borough's website at www.hpborough.com for those of you following along at home, if you want to check for consistency as you play along. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Chris to review this ordinance so that we can get some background on it.
Sure, thank you. So this is an ordinance to really update the zoning map, really three parts. The first two parts are to, whoops, I think the corrections that we did back in 2004 and 2010, which was actually update zoning map as needed when ordinance changes, zoning map changes were made at that time by text amendment. So when Bruce's Office CME did the zoning map in 2013, and when LRC did its zoning map in 2019, simply weren't aware of those changes. During our research, as you had mentioned it, the last year, about 810 North Seventh Avenue redevelopment, that's at the time we discovered there's something off with the zoning map, and that was predicated upon doing a research of the property itself adjacent to the P U R D one zone, which is the district that created the crossings, the building plan development along Cleveland Avenue. When we were doing the research, or really taking a step backwards, we're wondering, why did this property not get developed as part of the townhouse development if it's in the P U R D one district? So we did some more research, we looked at the zoning ordinances, and as you know, any zoning ordinance will say it was last amended by ordinance number this dated this. And in the zoning map section 110, 230-124, in other sections of the ordinance, you'll see amended, probably, I think there were like half a dozen ordinances. So the Borough Clerk and I, Jennifer Santiago, spent an entire day searching through the clerk books of the ordinances that adopted for the last 20 years, and we pulled out all of the ordinances that made zoning map changes. And we discovered there were two ordinances that were adopted but never made its way onto the map. And that's what this ordinance is meant to do, is really recapture those, identify what spots those are. And the third part is, obviously, since 2019, the last time we allocated the zoning map, there were several redevelopment plans adopted, so this map incorporates those redevelopment plan areas. So going back to the first ordinance, ordinance number 1633, adopted on April 20th, 2004, so we're talking over 20 years ago, there was a series of map changes done by text amendment, and they never made its way on the map. So this new map corrects that. Among those changes, they're listed in section one of the ordinance. So when you see updated zoning map here, attached here to it, it should be A, and then A, B, and C, those changes are not new. This is from 2004. So in subsection A, it talks about certain parcels that were in the C commercial zone a couple blocks on North Carrington and several blocks on Woodbridge Avenue going up to 11th Avenue. Those slots, again, 20 years ago, they were in the C zone, they're actually in the CBD. They're generally coincident with the boundaries of the Main Street, Highland Park, business improvement district. So it makes sense why that was done, it was done 20 years ago. Another series of map changes was on Cleveland Avenue, the southeast block along Cleveland Avenue, which was thought to be light industrial, actually has been professional office for the past 20 years. That's first up on this map. And third change was, the third of four changes was the one large plot in the northwest part of town, and basically in the ecological preserve boundary, one parcel was in RAE, actually been rezoned back to CR, which is conservation recreation, and this map shows it as all green in that area, as it should be. One final change in that 2004 ordinance was to adopt an overlay zone, which was the stream corridor connection overlay zone. Again, adopted in 2004, we found a map that was prepared by another consultant back in 2004, and we incorporated the data layers onto this map. The printout that you have is a little muddy, a very, very dark blue that basically goes on to Johnson Park, Johnson Park, as well as Two Brookes in the borough. Those are the overlay zones. It's basically a distance from the top of banks of the creeks and water bodies, or waterways, rather, and then 100-foot distance from the floodplain line. So that area, all I've read, is in the stream corridor connection overlay zone. A version that you see online, which is much clearer and available to the public, hopefully much easier to navigate and use, has more of a strength, a strike patch, as opposed to a solid group, I think, out in front of you. Another ordinance changed back in 2010. This is a result of litigation between the Borough and Bray. So at the time, Bray property was in the 2005 redevelopment plan area, part of litigation settlement. It was agreed at the time that their properties would be removed from the 2005 redevelopment plan areas and subject to underlying zoning at that time, which is CBD. So if you look at the center of the map, between South Fourth and South Third, you'll see only a few properties are situated in the number one, the Blue and Bray redevelopment area, that's the 2005 redevelopment plan area. So it doesn't apply to Bray Gate anymore and the parking lot behind it, it's just everything else on that block, including, I believe, is the parking lot of the South Third. That was 2010 ordinance, and it made its way back on this map, basically making 2005 redevelopment plan slightly smaller. And of course, I discussed all the redevelopment plan areas that were adopted by ordinance in past five years, which included 433 Cleveland Avenue, the downtown redevelopment plan for tracks A through B, the 420, 424 Avenue, basically the South and Shop Now Super Fresh site, the recently updated Upper Raritan Avenue plan, and the 810 North Second Plan. So the map is, as far as I can tell, finally updated, corrected. And that's really all there is. No new rezoning, just really reflecting all the changes, including sometimes picking up other changes. I will want to say, as a defense of the borough, this is not an uncommon issue. I've worked in other towns, and it's not uncommon, especially in a small town, to sometimes zoning map changes slip. Happens all the time.
Not to put you on the spot at all, should have a quick question. I noticed that the development where the old Y used to be, that's now Penzius Place, which is at the corner of Raritan and South Adelaide, as well as the large townhouse development on Cedar and River Road, are both in a zone called quasi-public? I'll be honest, I don't know what a quasi-public zone is, or why those townhouse developments would be in a quasi-public zone.
I don't have the information of what's actually permitted as district all hand, but that's the information we have.
Wait, this is second one?
It's the big townhouse development that went with, I believe it used to be in Penory, perhaps?
The Central.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and then...
That, the other was the Y, right?
Yeah, the Y, Penzius Place.
The answer.
I don't, I don't know what quasi-public means, I'm just curious why those two developments are in this, seem to be the only ones in this particular named zone, and as far as I know, they're not public.
I believe they both went to the zoning board because of that.
Oh?
Yeah, well, one thing you might want to do in the next master plan update, which will be five years from now, is to consider rezoning to reflect build conditions, and that's not uncommon change, because I do agree, there's certain, if these oddities, unless the Borough wants to control use guarantees through a use guarantees application, that's another way to keep it, really keep the way it is, but sometimes it's better to just clean up the ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I know both those areas, in there, before they turned into townhouses, were quasi-public areas. There was the Y, and there was the seminary.
Yep.
So I wouldn't be surprised if those were the only, I'm surprised on an updated zoning map, those old zones are still there, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, those, no ordinance to change it, and if it is approved by a use guarantee, that'll explain why it still stays the way it is until it's rezoned.
Interesting. Heard that, Matt? Something to clean up?
Put that on the to-do list.
Let me ask you about the redevelopment areas. So some of these redevelopment areas, they've actually been built, some of them have not been built, are all those redevelopment plans, can all those plans do the redevelopment standards supersede the underlying zoning?
In this case, they all do. If they were overlay, I would use the overlay hatching. But yeah, all the plans are adopted, including the 2005, they're all superseding, replacing them, so.
Okay.
Why put the stream overlay on the zoning map? I mean, it would seem to confuse the things. It'd be better to have a separate map.
I mean, that's, that's something that we could probably do. One thing I would do want to ask the administration is if there's an appetite for an interactive zoning map, and that that'll be an easier way to toggle through. Otherwise, I could speak to the administration, whether they're going to create a separate map, basically turning everything off except for the stream corridor.
I mean, if you look at the meadows over the far right-hand corner by the river, you would, given how it looks, you would think it's a very small area, and it isn't, it goes all the way to the river.
If it's printed in, or if the printing uses the hatching as shown on the digital file, then it won't be as opaque.
Yeah.
That might be a printing error, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's, as I said at the beginning, that this map is a little muddy when you come out of the printer. It should not be solid, as shown on your physical printout, it should be hatched as it is in the legend.
Yeah. Does the stream corridor have different development standards?
No, you see, it's a power.
Right. They are regulated activities, including prohibited uses.
Yeah.
I didn't really look into exactly what their standards are, but it's, it's an overlay, so people have no activity.
I'm just saying, if, if it has, if it has different standards, then it ought to be on the zoning map if at all possible, otherwise you can't, picking up the zoning map doesn't tell you.
Right.
Where to look.
Yeah, it's appropriate here as an overlay zone, as it's intended, that's how it was adopted, but I think to Mr. Williams's point, it may be useful to have a separate map, but everything's turned off except for that. There's a version that exists in the office 2004, but it's not digital, so it shouldn't take too long to do that, if that's something that the mayor council and the board administration want to see.
Does being designated the central business district by default mean that you can have multi-mixed-use property? Because I know that in our redevelopment plan, we have heavy mixed-use plans for retail, commercial space on the bottom, and apartment housing or condominium housing on top. And I don't see anything in the legend that designates anything for mixed-use, so does central business district designate the allowance for mixed-use properties?
It does. As a specific example, you have apartments over non-residential space, so for certain districts, it implies mixed use is allowed, for certain districts like the RAE, RAB zone, obviously you can't more than one house or one, either one single name or two names, that's implied to be only single use, but generally in the CBD, to a certain extent the C zone allows for mixed use.
That's what's going to be my follow-up question, is that extended to commercial?
To a certain extent. You could have two different principal uses on the lot, but if I recall correctly, the C zone does not prevent residential, which was precipitated the need for a redevelopment plan for Upper Raritan, which I think, as we discussed, might be a better idea to stretch that to the entire board, to allow the residential.
I have a comment and a question. Comment is, as a special planner, you see municipalities with this type of issue, all of the state, all over the country, it is a very common thing, especially as small towns, so, you know, no, you know, no hit on the town, this is, this is sort of a challenge, especially over decades of zoning. So the question I ask is, just if you can talk about the sort of, you know, filing of zoning ordinance, and how, you know, how that works, and then, you know, is the zoning ordinances as we update, and now do we have GIS, we have a sort of a GIS layer that we update regularly, and then are we filing that? Okay, well, maybe we should, and then, you know, then it speaks to some sort of interactive, interactive map for the public, so they could see what zone they're in, and so then pull down the bulk standards that they have to look at. But also, are we, would file also the county, you know, all towns filing their zoning ordinances with the county, so that there's at least a county map that could be developed, talk a little bit about the process?
Well, that process, I'm not familiar with the county, I think it's filed with the county and the GIS IT department, it's really massive. I know the county recently went through an effort, and when I saw the data for Highland Park and touching the other town I've worked for, I looked at it and said, oop, there's mistakes with that. So there's clearly a miscommunication effort, or, and I know the county did a great job grabbing all the data, but it's only as accurate as the data that's given to them. But going forward, we're certainly going to have, especially as me being involved, being nitpicking with this process, I'm going to make sure that information gets to them, and I made a pledge to the mayor and council and administration that anytime we do a redevelopment plan update, including one you're going to be getting soon, we also update the map. So this type of ordinance is going to be having much more regularly, especially in tune with the redevelopment plan, that way we don't, we don't have this issue of, well, that plan was adopted three years ago, we're just going to wait until we have money for it. This doesn't take long to update now to get all the data. This information is more graphic-based, illustrator and design through the Adobe Suite program, but we are, internally, I'm going through the effort of bringing this information into GIS so that we could potentially make an interactive map through a story mapping, through EdRead, much more efficiently. My hope is to do exactly what you said.
Sure, there are plenty of graduate planners, graduate students or planners living in the town, so do this for one of their GIS projects. I'm pretty sure we can volunteer.
I've been talking to rockers for a project in another town, and I think this would be a neat one.
Yeah.
For that to take with, especially since all the hard work's been done.
Yeah.
Now it's a matter of digitizing.
So in Up and Down Woodbridge Avenue, in the central business district, there are a number of residential homes that kind of like dot in between some of the businesses, like, for example, there's a house that's between the funeral home and Crowzer's, and then, like, there's just kind of these like one-off properties. Those homes are clearly all residential, they're not like mixed-use, but if someone in the future was to purchase one of those properties and knock it down and want to build something else, would they have to build a commercial mixed-use property, or could they rebuild a residential property? What's the Borough's sort of stance on that? Is it more trying to encourage more commercial mixed-use property, or would someone be able to replace residential with residential if the residential house is originally built in the central district area? And that's like throughout Highland Park?
So throughout Highland Park or specifically Woodbridge Avenue?
Well, I'm just using Woodbridge Avenue as an, as an example, but throughout Woodbridge Avenue and up and down Raritan Avenue, there are, like, the Main Street is kind of interspersed with residential homes.
Yes.
Well, are you talking about pre-existing non-conform uses?
Correct.
And future developments, so they'll give up the, they'll give up their grandfather rights, and they will most likely have to apply for zoning, whatever bearings it's to get conformity with the, with the more modern zoning ordinances.
Okay.
Any other thoughts or comments on the proposal to update the zoning map?
I have a question about, not necessarily the, the stream overlay zone itself, but the ordinance. It mentions using the, the 100-year floodplain as a, as the reference point for where the extent of overlay zone would be. Do you know if there's, in the ordinance, any mechanism to revisit that, the extent of that zone, if the reference map produced by FEMA is ever changed?
I don't recall there being like a dynamic change to it, but I think whenever the FEMA information for this quadrant is updated, we would update this map accordingly, once the data layers get into us.
Can you, can we do that without an ordinance? That this, this is a zone without an actual fixed boundary?
It does have a boundary, but if it's defined in, in relation to a different federal zone.
Right. It's not, not, you know, it's not defined, defined by, in terms of meets and bounds, it's defined by this environmental condition, and, you know, FEMA maps are contested.
Yes, they are, yeah.
One, one might well be in a position, I've sort of, you know, some private practice, I had situations where there were competing ideas about where, what the boundary of 100 year floodplain was, and argued that FEMA map was outdated, and that, that wasn't the real 100-year floodplain, and so I'm a little, I'm made uneasy. Now, this is not a problem for us here.
Right.
This is a problem in the ordinance, but since it's been flagged here, I would just say I'm made uneasy by, by a zone where the boundary is sort of floating, so to speak.
I don't think anywhere in the ordinance it says that the map can be dynamically updated. I understand it's a reference to a map none Borough's control, so by inference, it's dynamically updated, but I think it hit the same problem that we currently have, that someone actually has to go and update the map, even if all the referenced related maps have been updated, and that's how we end up with this situation.
Well, but the problem is, the problem with the ordinance, the problem with the map is someone who comes in and says, what can I do on this site? They look at the map, the map gave them wrong information, that's a serious problem, and I'm, I'm happy that we are updating it, because that's a problem on which hundreds of thousands of dollars can turn. You know, you know, you make a contract to purchase the land, because you've looked at the map, and the map says I can do X, when it really turns out you can't do X, but you can do something completely different. So that's a serious thing, but this is a different problem. This is a problem of, we seem to have an ordinance in which the boundaries of the zone might move without any, any public action at the municipal level, and that is, I won't say it's illegal, I'll just say it's weird.
So maybe what you could do is label that it's based upon FEMA map data such and such.
Say, say such and such, then, then it would be definite, and if you wanted to...
Recommend that the, whoever's reviewing it should check with FEMA for any updates.
That's right. I'm, I'm more comfortable doing it that way, saying this is FEMA map with such and such a date, and then if, if it changes, then, then you need an ordinance amendment to change that, change that notation. So now it's the FEMA map, not the, not the 2016 map, but the 2028 map.
So where do we, where does the reference for the stream corridor protection overlay zone currently come from?
It starts on the ordinance adopted in 2004, and it references 100-year floodplain.
Okay.
In multiple places, and it's 100 feet from that floodplain line.
So the concern is, should the 100-year floodplain change in the future, which, let's face it, it probably will.
It probably will.
Give it a three-foot change.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
So...
It's not implemented yet, that's why I was doing this here. Three feet, nothing else.
Do we, do we, by any chance, know the dates of the current?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's coming.
Yeah, it's like July 6th, 2012, it's the current map.
Yeah, but there's a new one coming, so.
Well, then, it's, it sounds like perhaps part of our authorization back to council would be to add another...
There are six, I see, under subsection F, there are submission requirements for the applicant under F1, A through, A through F. And as they do, there is a time for decision provision, so, I mean, we can clean it up in, in terms of definitive maps that have been drawn up, the current FEMA map, I mean, but obviously this is a hybrid situation, I mean, water, wetland boundary lines aren't definitive.
I, I, I mean, I also think that, you know, updating this map, I mean, the floodplains are going to change whether or not we update our map, and they're going to be imposed as an overlay to whatever our zoning map says, even if we don't update our map.
Right.
So having, being able to definitively say this overlay is reliant on these FEMA floodmaps is just to signal that, that there could be more updated ones, you should check for those as well.
I think they can do that by inference, so whenever the floodmaps are changed, I think it would be our duty, due diligence to update it accordingly, so we are updating now. That way there's less time of...
Okay.
...confusion and heartache.
I have one more recommendation. So... there's a designation for professional office, and it seems to be outlined where professional offices presently exist, and that's what's being designated on the map. But I would think that that is limiting to use of that land and use of that space for future use, should someone decide to sell their building and not use it as a professional office. I think that having the Central Business District designation for different areas on the Central Business District should probably apply to everything that you've designated as professional office, so that if someone vacates a building, and a building's for sale, someone comes in and says, hey, that would be a great location for a restaurant, but it's not zoned for Central Business District, it's zoned for commercial, that's limiting, maybe we should get rid of that professional office designation, and just designate everything Central Business District?
I think that's a recommendation that Council would have to change the zoning ordinances. I don't think that's, well, we certainly don't have the power to change the zoning ordinances.
Right, but I would just recommend maybe considering that.
Yeah, so.
Just to
Matt's here.
That's, that's number five on the to-do list. No, I mean, I didn't mean it that way.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a recommendation, which gives it more flexibility, and, you know, like, more possibilities in the future. I mean, you know, anything can happen, anything can change, like, you know, buildings burn down, we get to build back up again, and maybe it could be something else, and I would hate to see someone not take advantage of an opportunity, because it's zoned for an office, when it's so close to the main street, it could be something else.
To that point, I think in the future, the Borough Council will consider that. The thing is, the master planner supports transition zoning, so I think a lot of those things could be accomplished without really necessarily reexamining the master planning. And just so you know, as a reminder, in a PO zone, a single-family home is also needed as well.
And I'm very grateful for that.
All right.
Or you want?
Before we get into a motion, I just want to clarify the thought process on the flood map reference. Or would the clarification be that as the floodmaps get changed, the overlay needs to be updated accordingly, or a reference to whatever the date of the current floodmap that applies to this zoning overlay be added for clarification?
We could reference a different part of the Borough Code, Section 19713, actually lists the maps and dates of the maps that are regularly according to the flood prevention, flood damage prevention ordinance of the Borough.
I think that's a great
That's a clean way to do it.
Yeah, I think that's a great recommendation.
Do we know that they're current?
Even if they're not, we can say that's what we're
My, my, that's number six.
Yeah, my only concern is that reference is a different chapter, it's not in Land Zoll, it's chapter 230. I think you need to keep it the way it is, because it's based on the zoning ordinance.
Okay, well, my recommendation was, not for, not for this ordinance, but that that in, in reviewing the map, we have noticed a potential present problem with the ordinance that designated the stream, the stream, the stream the stream area, the stream overlay, and that ordinance wanted to change to make reference to a specific, a specific map. So, it's unambiguous, with the understanding that when those maps are updated, which will affect other things in municipality, that ordinance, that ordinance should also be updated. That's what I was proposing.
I appreciate that as well. So, it sounds like it is more accurate to say that this needs to be a recommendation referencing the zoning overlay ordinance.
That's correct.
As opposed to change to this particular ordinance.
That's how I was understanding, yeah.
All right. Anyone have any thoughts on that? Okay, last chance for comments.
One more comment. Just looking at this map, and looking at the area that is between Fifth Avenue and Seventh Avenue, so I guess that's below
North or south?
South, sorry. South Fifth, South Seventh, and then, like, there's this kind of like special area. If I'm looking at this key correctly, that's single-family residential ethological preservation?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Is this, this is also where proposed apartment building is going, yes?
That's Buckwoods.
Uh, the Buckwoods is in the east, the overlay with the multifamily residential overlay, with the crosshatch black, that's where Buckwoods comes in.
This is it right here. Okay, so I'm just making sure I'm seeing that correctly. Okay, okay, no, then no question.
Okay, then, I will open up to comments from the public on our consistency review of ordinance number 24-2096. Seeing no members of the public are present, I will close the public comment portion. Anyone observing us at home, please feel free to come down. In order to participate in our meetings, you have to physically be present here at our meeting, so please join us next time if you wish to be heard. So, that being said, at this time, I will solicit a motion on our consistency review of ordinance 24-2096. That is not inconsistent with the master plan.
There's any specific recommendations that we want to pass on to the council, but I'll put them on the memo. It doesn't seem like for this voter is.
Correct, well.
We want to
The recommendation doesn't affect this ordinance, but it is sent along in order to make comments on ordinance references.
So, we do want them to re-review the stream overlays on the statement.
Recommend that the ordinance for stream overlay be reviewed, in order to make sure we don't have a moving target going when people look at these zoning maps. Right, anyone want to make a motion?
Sure, I will, that the, the term of that, this ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan, noting that we are also making separate recommendations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kalidra. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chen?
Yes, it's not inconsistent.
Mr. Istorfer?
Yes.
Nathan Hazing?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Pearlman?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamm?
Yes. All right, motion carries. And with that, normally I'd ask Scott for any of the latest gossip in town, but he chose not to come tonight. So, I will ask the board if anyone has any last-minute comments about things on the agenda they want to talk about. Anybody? Okay, do I have to open up to the public? I think I have to open up to the public one more time. But seeing no members of the public, I will close the public portion comment of the meeting. And with that, I will solicit a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Always appreciated.